Hi to everybody. It's welcome back again. It's 3 o'clock and we start this first and second afternoon session, which is focusing on dialogue with members. We will present you some of the activities we have done, what we have obtained, and we will discuss with you about what we can do better or differently. So next slide please. There are six items to be presented today. You can read them there on a screen, so there is no need to repeat them. Each one of them will be presented by either people from the office or a person from the executive board. And on some of these, we will have some polls to ask you your opinion and future direction. So without further ado, I give the floor to Svetlana Tikhonenko from our office to present the new data featured in our higher education data portal. Svetlana, the floor is yours.
Yeah, thank you, Enrica. So hello everyone. My name is Svetlana. As you might see, I'm working in the Informatics Europe office as a program, Associate in Data and Analysis. And now I will quickly present you the new data that we added to the High Education Data Portal this year. So as you might remember, last year we made a big step and launched the Informatics High Education Data Portal, which presents the fundamental data about informatics high education in Europe. And I will ask my colleagues, I think you, Vina, to paste a link to this portal into Zoom chat. And now I will share my screen, so that you can see how the portal looks like and what important changes we made this year. So I shared my screen, hope you can see it. That's the main page of the data portal. The most important menu is Statistics. Here you can find the number of students enrolled in first year in all semesters, degrees awarded at Bachelor, Master and PhD level. We present the data for research universities and universities of applied sciences. And this year, we added the data for 2018-19. And currently, our portal covers nine years. Another big improvement we made this year, we included two large new countries that we were missing so far. It's France and Turkey. And I would like to thank our colleagues from these countries, who helped us to find the right data and to interpret it. And just a reminder, you can further click and add some other countries, either from the table or from the map. You can exclude some years, include them afterwards, and you will see some nice infographics on the right part of the screen. Just a short reminder, please always pay attention to the bottom part of the screen, where we show the footnotes. They are quite important, because they show and explain which data is given. You know that each country has its own peculiarities. And here we explain what are the differences, what important changes have been across years. So please pay attention to them before drawing any conclusions when you compare the data. Now I'm back to the main page of the data portal. By the way, this year we added the navigation menu, which can help you to easily navigate between different sections of the data portal. So the three new menus are higher. The first one is High Education Systems. Here you can learn more about different peculiarities of high education systems in each country. And currently, we cover 23 countries across Europe. The next menu is Academic Positions and Titles, where we show a comparative analysis of some key academic positions, PhD and postdoc and professor. So let's click first on PhD and postdoc. And here you will see the job titles in national languages for PhD candidate and postdoctoral researchers. And when you click on a country name, you can learn more details, how these positions are organized and so on. So the same principle is for academic positions and titles at professor level. Here we follow the nomenclature of assistant, associate and full professor. But of course, in some countries, there is no direct correspondence with this nomenclature. But again, whenever you click on a country name, you can learn more about these academic positions. And now I'd like to show the last but not the least menu, which shows probably the most interesting and controversial information. It's about academic salaries. And here we report estimated salaries for PhD and postdoc and for professors. Let's again click first on PhD and postdoc. And here you will see the table with estimations of minimum and maximum yearly salaries in Europe. We report gross salaries. And we really want to draw your attention that the salaries comparison is only meaningful when you read the country-specific notes that can be found below the table. So please read them carefully. And the same principle is for academic salaries of professors at various ranks. Again, here, reading the explanation below the table is really important, because we cannot consider all taxation or pension or social fare differences across countries. In addition, they might be different bonuses, special allowances or project grants paid to academics, which can make actual salaries earned by professors even higher. So again, in short, when looking at salary comparison, please always check the country notes below the table. So that's the main improvements. And I would like just to tell you once again that members of Informatics Europe have a special benefit. They can download the data, the statistics that we are reporting. You can click just here, download data, and you can learn how to do that. If you have any questions or issues, please always feel free to contact me. So that's mainly it. And I would like just again to stress your attention that this portal is really unique in its focus on informatics higher education in Europe. We pay a lot of attention to careful analysis and screening of their raw data. We are consulting with academics from informatics field in different countries. So this is very reliable and valuable source of information, and we invite all interested people to use it. And again, if you have any questions or need more information, please always feel free to contact me. So thank you for your attention. I will stop sharing my screen.
Thanks, Svetlana. And I would like the office to show the poll. Yeah, while I remember to our members that this is one service offered by us and it requires membership fee. So please help us in increasing membership in Informatics Europe. Now please focus on the... It's only one question, I guess.
Yeah, it's one question. But we would like if people have ideas or recommendations of what kind of data or which kind of analysis, if it's not listed, that people can write in the chat what they think, that then we can save this information for later.
So we leave you some time to reflect on the question and maybe provide us with suggestions, which is important, because we would like to do what you find helpful. So if you don't tell us what can be helpful to you, we cannot help you. So don't be shy, don't be like students in a class. Write suggestions. And also it is important that you show this service to colleagues of other departments that are not members. This is an effort that we started, I think, seven years ago or eight years ago. And every year it became smaller and more.
There is one question, Hiko. Someone, Simona raised a hand.
Yeah, Simona?
Yes, hello everyone. I also put the idea in the chat. Considering also the cost actions that we started last week, I was wondering if we can collect any kind of data regarding the academic stuff. So maybe because we done it on the students, maybe it will be interesting to see how many people do we have in the academic stuff, teaching or maybe also research. And of course, if we do that, maybe it will also be interesting to see which is the percentage of women compared to the overall.
Okay, so thanks, Simona.
So I think we can stop now, because the numbers are fixed.
Yes, yes, okay. So thanks, thanks to everybody. And now we go to the second item in this session, which is the Gregor Engels to present academic leadership offer. And Gregor, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I'm Gregor Engels, a member of the executive board. And I present today kind of new service we are offering to all members. The last two years, we started that we, on the Monday workshop, the Dins workshop, we also went into direction that we offered some courses on personal development, career development, academic leadership, we got quite positive feedback. So we decided, we're in the American Union, to offer kind of courses, webinars, and this topic. And we started this next slide. First, we can't do webinar. I have to say, I thought we could do it. We couldn't do it as much as we wanted to do. Of course, the idea was to have so face-to-face seminars, but we had to move everything to the web, to the online version. But we didn't stop, we continued. So we started, we started off kick-off webinar in June already, and the new academic norm. And this can be here later on, in the future. This was facilitated by our colleague, Deralin Fitzpatrick, and also by Austin Reiner. Most of the know Deralin Fitzpatrick because he was doing this workshop. So last year, this is from Vienna, and Austin Reiner is from Queen's University in Belfast. It is webinar, we also had this meeting, talk, by Matisse Barle from the Lincoln UK, about academia, billion, COVID-19, because everything is influenced by this COVID-19 situation. So we understand what will be the future life in this situation, researcher. When outcome of this was a 1990s yesterday, or maybe it was a 2010s. Where the new working group, Informatics Europe, begins here. And this impacts of COVID-19, Informatics Research, Education, Academic Life in China. If you're interested, please tell us, tell me, or see our office. So if you would like to be member of this working group, because we all have to work and understand what is the future and the new academic norm. This was a webinar, we started kick-off in June. But bigger service now is what we can see next slide is in online course, several sessions, six online sessions. It started in September. People are quite enthusiastic, who are following these academic leaders, starting this postdoc and so on, professors. So here, the idea is to understand what is the personal situation. If you are becoming an academic leader in informatics or computing, when you hear some content, say here, "Menschen like..." "If you have to evaluate your own strengths," "an academic leader," you have to understand what are your good things. And of course, you also get information about techniques to be better in this situation. To reflect on you and your experience, and also develop a plan for growing as an academic leader. Again, this is facilitated by Deralin Fitzpatrick and Austin Reiner. Of course, our plan is to continue. We see maybe this is the same topic, or this other topics. We'll see later in the end. So what you can see here is the data portal of Crossboard. What Svetlana is really, really important service we are offering, but you would like to offer more. So this is what's... Because here, we started this at Portrading. We're being hindered by the online situation. But this is the strength of Informatics Europe, that we offer really services to you and to your colleagues in your departments. And this is here, then by people from informatics, Deralin and Austin, computer scientists, informatics. And so offers this services, this additional background, how to do things, how to develop things to informaticians, to all the people in informatics. So from informatics to informatics, this is important service we have. It would like to continue. We sit here, we have a small poll. And the next slide, and please indicate what you would like to do. You can see here for questions, so for alternatives. What is the most focus on career development, for people? This is what we should offer more. Or the career of emerging leaders. This is really an important area where people start to rebuild up a group in this difficult situation of Corona. But maybe also send, when you become leader, send your first become leader of your own research group, maybe you become a leader of your department. This is always a topic here in our... With your activities, you are support, dienst, and department leaders. Maybe it should be something more, by the way, please indicate your choices here in this poll. Then I was brief, I was short, I think we can continue before we have questions. We have four minutes left.
Yeah, you can make questions, because we are still people answering the questions. We need to leave it open a little bit.
Yes.
Check in the chat if there are questions.
There is a remark from Linda.
Okay, Linda, she has a large number of graduate courses, copy students. Of course, this is really, we can see in Germany is increasing, when people understand, we don't have any to teach, we have to research, but we are becoming leaders of the future. PhD students, or the postdocs, we also have to train them. And that's true, that different places now people understand this, and offers this. But we also offer this now at Informatics Europe, passing for good, good of high quality. It's people and the order to choose which service you use. But I think what we are offering here is really high quality and is very interesting for all people who are working in informatics.
Is there any further question? Or of course, if you have other idea for courses that are not among the options in the poll, please write to us, to Gregor, to me, to the administration, to the office. We are always open to suggestion from members.
We are also open to people who would like to offer something. At the moment, we have Deralin and Austin. But if you are also doing something in the direction, and you would like to offer this via Informatics Europe, also interesting for us, please contact us.
Okay, I think we can end, Svetlana, because there's no more voting.
Okay, so let's end the poll. And let's go to the next item in this afternoon session, which is an activity that we tried during this year to give more regularity, to produce policy statement and to provide feedback to institutions. So, okay. So the most important things we have been doing during this year were these listed year of different nature. The first one was something that we decided to do on our own in February or March, when the COVID exploded. And it was actually a more general statement in the use of IT for COVID, but also applies to the general use of IT for public health. And the second one was the outcome of a workshop and work that we did after the workshop with national associations. We are really happy about this joint statement on informatics, research evaluation. And you can see all these statements in the link that Vina gave us put in the chat. So please have a look and see what we have stated in public as a community position on these items, on this topic. And we look forward to continue working with the national association to do more on informatics, research evaluation. There are a lot of differences among the various counties, but we think that something common can be said for the entire Europe. And as I always repeat, joining forces helps everybody to be stronger and makes our voice louder. The third and the fourth item are instead the feedback that we provided to the European Union to open consultation. That I say rather often, they launched to the public to see what is the opinion of the community at large on some issue. This year, we have chosen a couple of them, artificial intelligence and data, the two probably hottest topic in our field that everybody understood are important, even journalists and politicians. Maybe they do not understand exactly why, but they feel the importance. So we provided our position on these two papers. And it's difficult to say how far this will go, because I mean, they have a lot of feedback. But you may remember from yesterday morning session that we also participated in the public consultation on education, digital education. And that case, we were able to do to affect in a significant way. And so we think this is important. And final one was the feedback on a draft of effort on computing curricula, which is an effort that was started by ACM, IEEE and other organizations to try to systematize the way computing is taught all over the world. We provided our feedback, our European viewpoint. I mean, it was interesting, because there were some differences in the way we see computing or informatics in Europe and the way it is seen in other parts of the world. And this issue of curricula is also important, because I think that we could do something more European in this area. And this connects with the question we are going to pose you in the poll. Because I mean, producing this document means to be known to the general public and means to speak with your voice, with the voice of the European community loudly. And we think it is important, but maybe we are wrong, or maybe we are choosing not the proper argument. So I would like therefore to show the poll. We ask you your feedback. So first of all, how important do you think that it is for our community to answer to this question? Because this is not something that happens for free. I mean, first of all, somebody, which is in many cases, is the president, this is me, has to look towards what's happening and decide where we're to say something or not. And then you have to set up a working group, a committee. And this requires to spend some effort. And this effort, which is spent on this, is not spent on other things. So how much do you think it is important to provide this common view of informatics, of the informatics community on this kind of issue? And the second one, the second question is about contributing. Because as I said, what happened in the items that you have seen before, it happened through the participation or mainly board members. But clearly, since board members are limited in number, and much less than the members of Informatics Europe and the member at large of the community, we could do more if we have more people involved. In all cases, it was not a huge amount of work. I mean, it was one, two, max three pages. But it is clearly something that when the need arrives, you have to do very quickly. It's not something that you can work on for six or 12 months. So if you are interested in contributing to this, please say and add your name. Otherwise, we don't have the people to do this thing. And if you are not available, okay. You can just answer no or not answer at all. And, okay. I don't know how the answers are coming. Is people still answering?
Yeah, I think it's a bit...
Yeah.
We are moving today and I think so.
Yeah, okay.
I don't see new... Yeah, I think we can close, Svetlana.
Okay, so we are done with this.
Do you want to see the results? Just, I mean, we could just quickly share the results. I think this is makes sense. Can you share this, Svetlana, just quickly? Yeah.
Okay, so...
Yeah, we see that most people think it's important.
Yes, and...
Very.
Yeah, so, okay. So we are... And then 36 said yes, which is one-third, more or less, which we are 45. So there should be 15 names here in the chat, but I...
No, because just not everyone answered. So there was eight people said that they would like to help. And eight maybe, so 60 people among between the two.
But I mean, maybe you, since you are here, you are the representative, you are dean, so you are busy. But maybe other people in your group are a bit less busy than you are, or a bit more interested in this kind of work. So please spread the voice about this activity. It is really, really important that we are able to produce this statement. This provides, these are helpful for our community, provides feedback to the policymaker, and makes our association more and more visible. Okay, good. So I think we can go to the next item, which is going to be short. I mean, you may have heard about the Digital Humanism, which is an initiative that we are supporting as Informatics Europe, which is focusing on a different approach to the digital transformation that takes into account human beings since the first step you do in any transformation process. We... It was initiated by Anne Zvertner, a member of our board from TU Wien. Last year, we had a very interesting workshop in Vienna. And this year, we'll do it again, but virtually, as almost everything due to the situation, you know. And we have also manifesto, which states the importance of considering our discipline no more as a pure scientific and technical discipline, but as a, I mean, disciplines that has to do with social aspects, the people and the social relations. And I tend to say that we should train and consider our discipline a bit like medicine. That we, doctors have their roots in science. They study biology, physics, chemistry. But then they have to cure people. I mean, they have to understand what people have, the illness, and make them feel better and keep society healthy. And I think in the digital world, informatics is the equivalent of medicine, and we have to do this kind of work. And we can't do this if we don't have, if we don't assume a different attitude. So in the chat, you see the link to the Digital Humanism website. Please go there and stay in touch. There is a regular series of seminar, which are recorded and there is a YouTube channel. And so follow it and start thinking about these different perspective on, on informatics. That's, that's it for, for this issue. And I think unless there is some question. Okay, I, I don't see any question, but if you have, I mean, just please write to me or to Anas or you will find the way of knowing more. Okay, so we can go to the next item, which I think is again Gregor's. Time to speak.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will continue.
Unless, okay. No joke, no joke, go on.
Okay, I will continue. So I think what is very important for us, as the informatics, your board and the executive board, that we have a dialogue in both directions. And we listen to you and we hear something from you. What are your expectations, what are your requests? What do you expect from PEG, your fee to informatics Europe, to attend the ECSS conference? And so, so and that's the, I think we started very nice idea. This is creative coffee project, this coffee break, maybe you remember. Where we had different boards, these people from the, so whiteboards, these people from the board. And they were speaking to you about the different topics. And today I give a short report, what happened with your ideas and to distance. So there was one, one, speak more, but later by Kim Menz, the PT students, support. We had one by Erica, but I mean, the DCL, the KIRI, about women, informatics research, education. Some was about new ideas, by Enrico, and also what's one of the China relations with the European Union. And the other time, it was, yeah, obviouseth should do more. So in this international perspective, not only to the West, but also to the East, to the Far East. And Linda, what's very interesting is, and so then, as you know, the Corona, everything is here postponed. We tried to send Linda to China in March, but she refused to go there. And maybe you can understand that this is the moment postponed. But of course, it is still on our agenda and we will speak about it. Hopefully, next year, we'll come in here and Linda is still busy with it. But when we asked about the leadership topic, and you know, since yesterday, there was a GAN, the leaders workshop. Again, led by Medie, and, and this is the H R, but the board, the Russian, the Eisenbacher, the board, that the God, the positive feedbacks, and we should continue with the leaders workshop. And also what we do in this perspective, that we are also reported, the academic leadership. Now, go to the first three items here, little more detail, I tell you what we did there. So here you can see Kim, Kim Menz, the active member of our board, and he was standing in front of this court, also the support. And so some of your ideas were, should include the interaction between industry, academia, for internships, and maybe even joint PhD, and so on. So maybe you know, if you look into our internal organization, we have so called high level activities. And the it worked, but it's responsible for such a high level activities, focus area, video in our work, support, and so we, the fine, the new one, and training relations with industry. And Dick Goldmann is responsible here, and he worked on a work plan, and he started first conversations with industry. And this topic, so this work is also going on, of course, also hindered by Corona, but we are busy here. Then there was an idea to introduce exchange, the European level. We can even more involved in the European level. And you know that we are always looking for new members, that we are busy business, we are successful. You see later, we have now cost action is working now. And of course, we see the, the academic leadership program again. So we are, yeah, offering more and more in work with the European level. And the idea was to do more, basically collect the data collection. And also here is all the scene, the report by Svetlana, that we have now, also the PT students, and some was the salary, and the paper, and we will still continue. This is the, we will extend data via collecting and then showing to you. Next slide, then there was another table on women, informatics research and education. You know, this is always important topic at informatics Europe. We had the wire group, the wire workshop, and here, and this is like, is the Letitia, in front of the board. And next, the latest, the radio, the, who was also there, and we had now the running cost action on the European network for gender, benefits, informatics. Letitia and Christina, heavily involved here, but also the new member in the office is the weaker, and we need to also supporting this activity here heavily. And then, and that was the education. Yeah, as I said, this is an important topic, that we will have special workshop again tomorrow afternoon, wire workshop, and we have improved, and there are all stages of the clear path to informatics. You have seen that we have this Minerva water, also supporting the diversity issue. So we also took here your advice. Your ideas, should do more, and then we continue, of course, this way. Next slide, shows, then, not all, many, many ideas, you had, new ideas. Collected here on history, we have, we have forgotten, the other ones, you mentioned. But so the question, the request, that we should inform our members in a better way. And so here is another person in the office, is Franziska, she is, is from communication. And she did a lot, so last year, and have an active Twitter account, have an YouTube LinkedIn group. And also to increase the frequency of members, but the building, this comes now every second month. But again, here, I have to say, we need your support. So when Franziska is sending you, your department request, do anything to report. And your department, of course, we would be really happy to get this information, to put it this way. So that is, can this, or other members of informatics Europe. So it has held, it has always to be to way communication. And so you are by having paid a fee for informatics Europe. This is, and this is first step, stay, yeah, stay active in our dual communication. And so, and that's our idea, was to do even more with the national associations. And we took this, we were here, and then again, we have here workshop tomorrow morning. And this Minerva, the informatics, where the national stations are invited, then coming with the presented tips. Not coming really, but online coming. And but we had face to face meeting on open access, open data, and it's a state of management. In January, it was, it's impossible, so I don't know, when you pass the, the great number of the national stations, and it is speaking to each other. So this means we are open, service for you as individual, but we also offering the service to the national organizations, we are like a platform for them. And the people who met for the first time in this way, which means for international associations, so the old said, it was really helpful, the exchange, the ideas and change. And you read, see, also, the informatics for all is growing and is working. And the, the informatics, the country, and schools, you say, is curriculum framework now started. And informatics for all, so we are here also supporting, basically, new development in the area of information. So, and together, you see that we take off, it's here, it's what you are telling us. And we try to, as to start, and appropriate initiatives. But you should also not forget, in the heaviest, say, this here, one, and members and support in, in, also in the executive board, are volunteers, we are doing this work voluntary for the community. And you may understand that our capacity is limited, so we need all of you to support us. And then we all together become very, very successful organizations. So we see, we don't have a poll here, but of course, if you have any, any further idea, to set some, what we should do, and it's even better, if you say, I think it's good to do this. And I'm also willing to contribute, to help, then please tell us. And maybe we also have nine, one or two minutes for, for such ideas, questions. If we have one, we'll say, um, we left. So we open, we, we might go to you, if you would like to say something, you ask something, then listen. Yeah, I was already, already, as you here, by Linda, here, also, also asked for other people who are interested in joining her work, the pieces, speak to Linda, speak to us. And, yeah, we need all, we need, we have to work together, otherwise we are not that successful as you could be. And I will give the word to you.
Yeah, yes. Thanks, Gregor, thanks for your presentation. And I stress again the recus from, from Gregor. The association is what you make of it. I mean, so if you don't work, if you don't cooperate with us, we cannot do more. So it is important that you try to think what you can do and try to speak about this with your colleagues. I mean, people that are not yet members, try to convince them to become members. Speak to your other colleagues in department and try to convince them to give a little of their time to, to, to the association. All together, we can be stronger. And now, I think we are coming to an end. I will give the floor to Javier Soriano from Universidad Politécnica de Madrid and also president of CODI, the Spanish Council of this.
First, we announced right, and he said that the CSS is going to be in Madrid. And after we can pass, so I think, yeah, so we, the announcement is that we really hope that it's going to be in Madrid in twenty twenty-one. And then, yeah, so Javier can say something.
Hello, hello, everybody. So I just want to say a few words. First of all, I want to, I want to congratulate Informatics Europe for providing such an interesting virtual space for knowledge exchange and networking. I have to say that the conference has been organized at a very high level this year, despite of the difficult of the, the good time of the pandemic. So congratulations. And next year, ECSS hopefully will be hosted by UPM and co-organized by CODI. I will, it will be our pleasure and a great honor for us at CIM, UPM and CODI to host ECSS twenty twenty-one in Madrid. And let me say just a few words about these institutions in less than, than two minutes. Universidad Politécnica de Madrid, UPM, is the, is the oldest and largest Spanish technical university with more than four thousand faculty members, around, around thirty-eight thousand undergraduate students and six thousand postgraduates in twenty-one schools of study. And the UPM School of Computer Science, Escuela Técnica Superior de Ingenieros Informáticos en Español, is a, is a pioneering school in university level informatics in Spain and has been spearheading Spanish progress in the, in the field since nineteen seventy-seven. And our community has one hundred and seventy faculty members, around two thousand and one hundred undergraduate students and three hundred postgraduates. CODI is, is, as you know, the Spanish Council of Deans of Informatics. And this national association consists of sixty-seven faculties and schools of informatics from fifty-eight different universities in Spain, is very big. CODI became a member of Informatics Europe back in twenty sixteen. And the fact that CODI co-organized the event will facilitate, in my opinion, more leaders and decision makers in informatic education to attend the conference, strengthening the importance of, of building a, a strong European community in informatics, which is one of the core objectives of, of Informatics Europe. To facilitate this, I am trying to organize the annual meeting, meeting of the CODI General Assembly, involving sixty-seven deans in Madrid and on the same dates as ECSS twenty twenty-one. I hope this, this will represent a great opportunity to increase the presence of Spanish universities in, in informatics Europe. We will do our best to organize a memorable ECSS in Madrid, as was the, the twenty-twelve edition in Barcelona, hosted by our colleagues, Universidad Politécnica de Catalunya. And in case ECSS could finally return to a physical relocation conference next year, the safety and the well-being of all conference participants will be our priority. So till next year, till next year, please stay safe and healthy.
Thanks, thanks, Javier. And thanks also for having accepted to organize the, the, the event. And we, we really, we really hope that we will be back to physical meetings very, very soon. Okay, so I think we now can close this session and switch to the General Assembly of the Association.